I'd like to call the June 28th, 2022 meeting of the Easton Metal Planning Board to order. Required by master law to inform individuals that this meeting is indeed being recorded by LCAT. And I'm required to ask if there's anyone in the audience who might be recording this meeting. And if so, would you please raise your zoom hand so you can be brought into the meeting? Identify yourself and tell us the method in which you're using to record this meeting. I don't see anyone. So we have convened this evening. And I'll let John, why don't you just read the read the item first?
Yes, item number one, under continued business review and discussion of special permit HB TSP 2009-0019 for Paul Bunyan Wood Company, a home-based trade at 160 Maple Shade Avenue, East Long Meadow, MA 01028, under Tom Thomas O'Brien, due to violation of special permit conditions. This is continued from April the 19th, May the 5th, May the 17th, excuse me, and June the 21st.
Thank you for that. So just a quick recap. So the zoning bylaws of the town of Easton Metal require us to hold a public hearing. Should, or excuse me, a public meeting should we be acting on the possibility of a revocation, suspension, or amendment of a special permit? The first time we met on this matter, we, as chair, I opened it up to just about anybody who wished to speak about this matter. There were people who who indicated that there were issues with the special permit. And then there were individuals who just alluded to Mr. O'Brien's character and fact that they had no specific issues with this. You might recall from back then, I tried to get people to speak to the specific citing of the matter from the building inspector. He was, Mr. O'Brien was cited on the special condition that there shall be no retail sales on the property, no grindings of logs, and the applicant is not allowed to bring logs cut elsewhere off its, excuse me, logs cut elsewhere offsite and bring them onto the property for harvesting of any kind. There were individuals who spoke about, spoke about things that really just had no relevance, regardless of all the different times that I asked them to speak directly about that issue. Individuals who felt that they did not have sufficient opportunities to speak a second or third time submitted additional written documentation. This item has been continued a couple of different times. And one time it was from a request by by Mr. O'Brien to be able to meet with three individuals who addressed the planning board about their concerns about him not following the conditions of the special permit. It is my understanding that one of the three individuals who received letters from Mr. O'Brien met with him and and two other individuals who the letters were addressed to chose not to do so. So what I would like to do, and I believe the board is fine with this, is to at least ask Ms. Leone, who I believe met with Mr. O'Brien and Mr. O'Brien, and if he has a representative, to be able to be brought into the meeting. And in a quick manner, let us know what you believe was the outcome of that. I'm then going to bring the issue back to the board for their consideration after that time. So I'll start with Ms. Leone, who I believe is the individual who did meet with Mr. O'Brien. Would you like to give a recap, Ms. Leone?
Hi there, everyone. Hi. Yes, it wasn't really my intention to meet with Mr. O'Brien because I had gone to his home in the past and asked for a neighborly resolution to the noise and disruption in logs. But I chose to do it because the board had continued the session based on wanting us to try to at least think this over. I will say the meeting was as I expected. They're very nice people, but the issue remains, and I have the same exact stance that I had at the start. And I'm going to also share something about my feelings about this process, too. But I have the same feelings. What is within the law? We don't know because nobody here has been able to clearly lay out the exact laws. And secondly, the process you take as a neighbor to have an issue and get it resolved. Neither of those things have been introduced into this from the start. I never got a response to my written complaint put in in February, following the guidelines for the zoning violations.
So Ms. Leone, I'm going to stop you for a moment. I want you to address to the board the results of your meeting with Mr. O'Brien.
The results of my meeting with Mr. O'Brien were, I, as your neighbor, care about neighborly relations. And if you were to be following the laws in the special permit and the special conditions of the permit, we wouldn't have to even have this conversation, I don't think. But let's hope that by following the guidelines in the future, this could be resolved. But there are is no path forward, in my opinion, without further investigation by the board of the actual laws, because Mr. O'Brien let me know that he was going to continue his business as he has been. We have been enduring this for far too long. And I don't want to have anybody else have any kind of inconvenience, but I'm not going to lose my ability to enjoy my home.
Okay. So can I just kind of preface it by saying there was no resolution?
No resolution.
Okay. Mr. O'Brien. What was your interpretation of the meeting with Ms. Leone?
He's muted.
So the lower part of your computer screen, there's a microphone. If you move your cursor down there. Thank you.
Thank you. This is my wife's computer. So, yes, we met with Mrs. Leone, my wife and I, and to try and come to a neighborly resolution to this. And I explained to her that I moved the operation further back and to give me a chance. And as she stated earlier, she didn't feel that we came to a resolution.
Okay.
So I made, put my hand out and tried to come to a neighborly resolution and made attempts to resolve this. That's all I'll say. My lawyer is here with me this evening. Would you like to add something, Darlene?
Yes, it seems that the biggest complaint seems to be about noise continually. And I didn't think that was part of what we were cited for. I'd just like to add that, but it keeps coming up and coming up.
Nope, nope. Okay, I'm going to bring it back to the board.
May I speak?
No, no, no. I'm going to bring it back to the board for board discussion. So, board members, discussion. Mr. Kingston?
Yeah, reviewing the minutes of the meeting in '09, when we approved this permit. Basically, Mr. O'Brien indicated that the only wood he would be bringing on his property was 10 cords for his personal use, and he would not be bringing on other logs and processing them or transferring them on his property. What we've seen from testimony from the abutters is that that is not what what is happening. And so, based on what he asserted during the meeting, I see an issue. I also see an issue in the the actual conditions that we put on the special permit, that logs were not to be brought onto the property at all to be processed, other than the 10 cords that he's personally allowed to do under state law. So I, it appears to me that there is a violation of the conditions of the special permit that appears to be ongoing. And we're talking now here about 13 years of operations. So, yeah, that's all I'm going to say at this point.
Mr. Mr. Punderson?
Yes, I would echo George's words that the special permit, page four, item 15 specifically states that no logs will be brought onto the property. Earlier in the in the in the pages, it also states that there will be no business conducted on the property, no retail business conducted on the property. It seems that Mr. O'Brien's business doesn't fit where it is and won't fit where it is because he has to stockpile logs. Understand that it's what he does for a living. I also have to look at what we all agreed on in '09, and that was what I just stated. No logs brought on the property, no sales done on the property, period. So I can't see any way that Mr. O'Brien can operate his business the way he does it on his property. It just, it just doesn't work.
Mr. Torres or Ms. Chariswell, do you have anything you wish to add?
I echo the sentiments of the George and Pete. Outside of the permit.
Jonathan, do you want to add anything?
And no, I echo what what George and Pete have already said. I will say it was interesting reading the over the police reports, and it appeared that the only complaints that had been received, it sounded like was only from this year. So it doesn't seem like there was a ton of complaints. It appears just only those two. So I thought that was interesting in reading through the kind of the information that we were provided.
So, so these are always, you know, difficult situations. And it's, you know, sometimes it gets a neighbor said this, and the petitioner says that. And so I was, you know, somewhat torn until I actually read the letter of May 12, 2022, which is the letter of Mr. Mr. O'Brien sent to to the neighbors, including Ms. Curry or Ms. Leone. And in it, he states, I now have seen and read the special permit and understand and will abide by all of the specific conditions. So essentially, to me, that's an admission that he has been in violation of the conditions for the past 13 years. So to me, that's a clear admission that he has not followed the special condition in the special permit. So based upon everyone's comments, does someone wish to make a motion on this matter?
No, see, you'd like to speak.
All right, Mr. O'Brien, go ahead.
All right. First of all, I have I have an attorney. All right.
Okay.
This is Russ. This is, this is a railroad. This is a railroad, what you're doing.
You didn't ask, you didn't ask if he could speak. I'd be happy to have Mr. Mr. Levine, if he's your representative.
So, so Mr. Levine has been representing this. And you know this, you're a lawyer, Russ. You're a lawyer, Russ.
Do you want him to address the board, Mr. O'Brien? I'd be happy to have him address the board.
Yes, I think that would be prudent for me, don't you, Russ?
I, I'm certainly happy to do that. Mr. Levine?
I'm here.
And I just want to remind everyone in the audience, we continue this matter three different times. It's time that we make a decision one way or another on this issue. Mr. Levine?
Yes, sir. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I just wanted to begin, and I know you want me to keep it short, but I think it's important to reiterate what the chairman has stated previously. We're limited here by the violation notice that was sent out by Mr. Duquette the end of February. He limits it to special permit 15. And 2001, when Mr. O'Brien began his business at the location, he conducted it in a manner, in the same manner he's conducting it today. In December, late December 2008, he applied for a special permit via the home-based trade. On April 13, 2009, the planning board granted him by unanimous vote a special permit to operate the business. As the board knows, the minutes of a meeting are rarely viewed, they're never, to my knowledge, sent to the citizen. And it's only the board normally that reviews and approves them in the future. The minutes of the meeting and the special permit, and I checked, the special permit had been recorded in the registry of deeds, June 1 of 2008, by the town, the then planning board director. The special permit document was returned to the town hall. I'm, I'm believing that Mr. O'Brien never received either copies of the minutes or the special permit to review after they were prepared. In fact, the special permit was signed by the then chairman, but actually signed by the planning board director. We have reason to believe that there was friction between Mr. O'Brien and then and the then director. It wasn't until February of 2022, and shortly thereafter, that the O'Briens saw for the first time the minutes of the meeting and the special permit that was recorded. And that was after receiving the violation. They disagree wholeheartedly with the verbiage that appears in the minutes. In fact, the minutes have non sequiturs within that section that Mr. Kingston alluded to, that Mr. Morris said, the then chairman asked if he brought product to the site from another site to cut it up or process it. He said the only processing of what he does, which is allowed, is the processing of firewood for personal use. And there was never an intent to conduct a lot of a cutting of boards, grinding, chipping operation at the site. I took, I was confused. Why would someone apply for a special permit for home-based trade after they've been operating for at least eight years and not ask for the same process of their business? And that's what the Mr. O'Brien did. He conducted the business following 2009 in the same manner. It wasn't until I told you in March of 2022 that he saw those requirements. I then questioned, why would someone do that if he wasn't going to be able to operate his business on the site? I spoke with the then chairman of the planning board, Tom Morrisette, who gave me permission to relay his confirmation of what I surmised to this board, that in fact, his recollection of the hearing then was, yes, there were complaints, Ms. Leone was one of them, about the conduct. The board heard them, and the board knew that the conduct of Mr. O'Brien's business would continue in the same manner. There is no evidence, other than the interpretation of the word harvesting. And Mr. Morris said, didn't know where that word came from. We can only surmise where, who may have inserted it. There is no mention of the word harvesting within the minutes of the meeting. We believe that there is no evidence, therefore, that Mr. O'Brien has violated special permit condition, special condition number 15. The issues that were brought up to the board in previous meetings and even tonight about noise and other factors are not within the scope of this hearing or this meeting, I'm sorry. And therefore, there is no evidence that I can say, in fact, quite the contrary. All the evidence points that the conduct of the business has continued in the same manner since day one. There's been no change in the conduct, other than Mr. O'Brien moving back some of his operations to the rear of his property to soften any noise that the neighbors may understand. And so based on that, and limiting the scope of this investigation into the wording of special condition 15, and we know there are no retail sales at the site, there was no, there's no grinding of logs, the only, and the, Mr. Duquette underlined the last phrase, which has the word harvesting. If you interpret the word harvesting to include grinding and chipping and mulching, et cetera, that's what's being done. He's not processing it there. It's merely a, a transfer point for the logs he takes, that he cuts trees on anyone's property, brings it to his site, and then they're transported by other vehicles offsite to a company he's dealt with. And so I say to you, you know, I don't think there's, I know there's no violation of special condition 15. There were previous complaints to Mr. Duquette on noise and other issues back in November of 2021. In December of 2022, Mr. Duquette issued a response denying any allegations of that. The police, the reports that you have requested indicate in 22 years, there were two complaints, and the officers who responded cited that there was no violation at that point. This is a man whose livelihood depends on this special permit. His support of his family and himself are pending on this continuation of the special permit. I ask the board to consider these facts before you make a decision. Thank you.
You're muted, Russ.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Questions for Mr. Levine from the board. Mr. Kingston?
I'd just like to point out that the minutes of public body meetings are public documents, which are available to anyone once they're approved. And also that normally special permits are sent to the applicant after they are recorded. But in any case, as a recorded document, they are a public document and available to the applicant at any time. And so ignorance of the conditions of the special permit, I find to be rather facetious to bring up because these are public documents that were available to the applicant. And if the applicant chose not to access them prior to this year, that's on the applicant. And again, I, the minutes are what we have to go on. I was in that meeting. I don't have a memory of the meeting, quite frankly, but reading the the minutes. I mean, I know Tom is a great guy and all that, but I would suggest that if the if the council feels that the special permit is ambiguous, then the proper way to deal with it would be to cancel it and have the applicant reapply, which he is allowed to do, and allow the board to become much more specific in its conditions.
Mr. Punderson?
I've been on the board for, I don't know, 15, 16 years. I know Tom O'Brien since he was a young kid. This is really upsetting to me. Very upsetting. There's three things. One, one line says, no, all workers will be done offsite. Another line states that there's no retail sales. And another line, number 15, states specifically that no logs cut elsewhere should be brought on the property, period. And this, this is, I don't want to hear about the word harvesting because it doesn't relate to the logs being brought onto the property that were cut elsewhere. So there's definitely a violation. I'm really upset about this.
Well, we, we had Mr. Levine come into the meeting. I saw your hand, Ms. Leone. Would you like to add another comment?
Two brief comments. First is, there may be other neighbors, such as Ms. Courier, who'd like to have a chance to speak with the board tonight, too. So I don't want to take all the time. Secondly, I would like a better understanding of the process in the future, but to speak to the 22 years that Mr. Levine had brought forward, I have patiently waited through this. And I'm just going to give you a quick summary and feel free, Mr. Levine, to reach back out to Mr. Morrisette on my behalf. I went to that special meeting and brought forward major issues with the noise and and logging trucks at that point. Mr. Kingston, you may not recall, but I recall, and you actually reassured me that the board would make sure that the special conditions were followed on that permit when I spoke about appealing it. I have had deaths, multiple deaths in my family, and I have sat here and not even been able to sit outside and enjoy my own peace and quiet due to massive industrial noise for many, many years. And I don't say that to make you feel sorry for me. I say it because I went down to his house in good faith and was brushed off. And I won't even say what language I received on my attempt to make this right in person. I will secondly say, when Darlene and Mr. O'Brien came up here the other day, I had good intentions then, too. But I won't be bullied into not being able to enjoy my own peace and quiet and residential area. My suggestion was, follow the special permit, make it right with the board, maybe rent an industrial pad to do some of this processing work and move on. None of us get to run businesses from our home that disrupt our neighborhood. It's a residential site. It's not, you want to do farming? You want to do your business? Find a way to do it that doesn't disturb neighbors for years on end. This is many, many years. So I'm very grateful to the members of the board tonight for having the courage to say, we all like you, Tom. No one wants this for you. And you can feel anger towards us as your neighbors or resentment, but we're only trying for a fair resolution. Mr. Levine, I find it really sad that you started the meetings, the very first planning board meeting that you attended, you announced that Mr. O'Brien was bringing logs onto his property. To me, that proved that no one had have even read the permit. No one had even prepared for this. We have been witnessing and enduring it for far too long. I wish you could find a great resolution, Tom. I really do. I care about your family. I have a livelihood. I'm working my butt off. And one of the reasons you're getting complaints now versus the last 15 years is because we're working from home during COVID, and I'm having to cancel meetings because I can't hear people on a Zoom call such as this, because the grinding and vibrating in my house is so loud that I have to get off the call. It's just common sense and logic. And I will do whatever it takes to continue forward, to be a good neighbor, to care about his situation enough to try to be supportive. I hope you do reapply and maybe find a way that you can do some of this work offsite, whatever it is. But Mr. Levine, I'd like you to, I'd like to also say, number 15 was a clear violation. So thank you for bringing up Mr. Morrisette and the issues, but that meeting in 2009 was clear. We all discussed it. And I met with you, Tom, right after that meeting, and you reassured me that you were looking at winding down your business, possibly retiring, working at other things. I get it, but I waited and didn't, we didn't do a lot of police calls because we're nice people. We didn't want you to have all kinds of issues. We kept hoping you would stop this racket. Okay, so that's my feeling. Sorry, I'm a little stressed out today, but this is very hard for us. I had double plans, double booked tonight. So it was just like, it just won't end.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So board members, we've kind of opened up the door. You okay with me opening up the meeting to other individuals who wish to be heard? Yes or no?
No.
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 Okay. Then I will bring it back to the board. Discussion after hearing Mr. Levine and Ms. Leone and Mr. O'Brien. Anything you want, anyone, anyone want to add? Mr. O'Brien, your hand is up. Do you want to, do you wish to speak?
Yeah, there, Russ, you certainly gave Terry quite a bit of latitude.
And I'm going to give you the same thing.
Yeah, well, this, this meeting sounds like it's already been decided. Sounds like you've already had a meeting before the meeting.
Well, that's not the case.
So it sounds like you've already had a meeting before the meeting, Russ. You stayed in the beginning. You don't know me.
And I would challenge you, Mr. O'Brien.
Russ, I'm, I'm not done speaking.
Mr. Kingston, Mr. Torsha, go ahead to talk to him.
I'm not done speaking. You, you can listen.
I will.
You can listen too. All right. You, you've already alluded to you've had a meeting, Pete, with, with Russ. All right, Russ.
I ain't had no meeting with Russ.
You said at the beginning.
And if I want to discuss something with Russ Denver over the phone.
At the beginning of this, Russ.
Mr. O'Brien, the floor is yours.
Know me. Oh, you're going to shut me off. You're going to.
No, I just said the floor is yours. The floor is yours.
Beginning of this, Russ, you didn't know me. And we both know that's not true. So that's, that's how you started this meeting. You, you just gave Terry quite a bit of latitude, like complete latitude. And you're not going to let me speak or the people who represent me speak. There, there's a lot of neighbors here. I have, what do I have? Fifty neighbors, Russ? I'm sure you've looked. So you just alluded to a letter, right? I have no idea what that letter is. All right. I certainly never wrote that letter. You just alluded to a letter that you didn't produce. And you, you just, you just quoted, and I have no idea what you're talking about. Terry Leoni, she's never been to my house. I've never spoken to her other than on the phone one time, one time. So she said she's come down here. She accused me of using, I don't even know what language, which I would never do. All right. And I would like to see this letter you're talking about. But all this being said, this board has already made its decision. It's, it's clear. Pete's already alluded to it. It, it's clear you guys all spoken behind the scenes prior to this meeting. All right. That, this is obvious. I mean, your, your facial expressions, Pete, you're, you're unmuted, Pete. So you can hear your groaning and, and your body language.
I'm upset. That's why. I'm really upset.
Yeah, please, 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 please. All right. The, the special conditions, all right, were never sent to me. Robin wrote what she wrote. All right. That's not representative of what happened at that meeting or what went down. My business hasn't changed in twenty-three years, twenty-three years. Now all of a sudden, there's complaints. There's a couple of neighbors complaining. There's, there's fifty that are behind me. And you, you guys are afraid to have this meeting in public because you know that I will fill the place. And you know that the, the, the majority of the sentiment is there's nothing going on. There's no problem here. So this board is met in secret and now is going to railroad me over two neighbors. And you've given them quite a bit of latitude to speak freely. Why don't you open it up to everybody that's there? Why don't you have it in public?
Other butters.
For the other butters.
That also have opinions. Why does Terry get to talk, but the other butters who have opinions don't get to speak? How is that?
Let me just take this back for one moment.
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Kingston.
I resent, uh, Mr. O'Brien accusing us of breaking the open meeting law. We have not discussed this subject in private in any way at any time. And if he thinks we've broken the open meeting law, I suggest he files a complaint with evidence. Because there is no evidence. We have not discussed this matter outside of any of the public meetings that we have had. And to make that accusation of us with no evidence, I find insulting. Thank you.
Mr. Torsha, did you want to add something?
Yes, I, I, I just wanted to add, my, my mind hasn't been made up. I, quite, quite frankly, my thoughts going into this evening were that I thought that it was such kind of a narrow complaint. I didn't really think it raised to the level of potentially revoking it. Those are my thoughts. I'm not going to let these, the last few minutes really change those thoughts. I don't let emotions kind of guide the feelings. I, I would like to, though, preface, we, none of us have had conversations. You can look at my emails. You can look at my phone calls. You know, I, I have a, I, like everybody else here, I'm sure either is retired or has day jobs. I'm a fairly busy person. I'm not having conversations about cases. And I, I, I would hope that there's better decorum in the future, but that just simply is not the case. And my mind certainly isn't made up. I just don't like frankly expressing how maybe I'm going to vote on something prior to voting on it. When I vote on it, I'll make that decision. That, those are just my thoughts, but I resent, I, I just, that is definitely not, and I am more than willing, I'm more than willing to meet, I, I'll meet with neighbors. I'll meet with people outside here. I'm willing to go above and beyond. So the, the, the situation that we're trying to avoid, I, I hate Zoom. I would love to be in person. I run CPC, Tom, as you know, in person now. Uh, so I, I have no issue, um, meeting in person. And I, I, I can't speak for everybody else on the board, but I think I'm at least, you know, um, expressing myself. And I, I understand where you're coming from. I, I have a family member who has a business that conducts it outside. And, you know, there's other things, but these are very, you know, legitimate, you know, situations or accusations that are, you know, being filed or being addressed. And I think, you know, we've, I think we've, we've heard so much on both sides about this. We've now had numerous meetings. I think at this point, we're largely frankly, ready to decide on it. Not to, not to push you, Mr. Chairman. I, I'm, I'm somebody who likes to let everyone speak, but I think we've given, I think both sides some pretty equal amounts of time. So those are just my thoughts, just immediately reacting to that. So, thank you.
Any other board member wish to address this matter? So the board has indicated they don't wish to take Mr. O'Brien?
Yeah, this board has already made its decision. Pete, Pete told me at the car wash the other day that he spoke to you and I'm going to have to pay the price. So if that's, that's not an open meeting violation. If that's not an open meeting violation, I'm not sure. Jonathan, I, I honestly believe you. And if your, your mind's not made up, then I don't know, I would want to hear from everybody personally. George, sounds like your mind's made up. Pete, you and, you and Russ have already colluded that I'm going to have to pay the price. Those are your words at the car wash.
It's not what I said. I said, I said you may have.
Hundred percent yours. And Russ, where is this letter? Where is this letter?
I have a right. I have a right to have a phone call with a question to another member of the board. We did not meet as a, as a, uh, 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 council, as a meeting with all five members. I have a right at any time to call any board member if I have a question. Period.
I understand the open meeting violation.
And, and what you have done is you have violated your, the conditions of your special permit repeatedly for years. The planning board is here to protect the quiet comfort of people enjoying their homes. And you have violated that, that part of it. There's nothing I can do about it.
I'm not doing anything that is not completely allowed under ag laws. All right. I got this special permit as additional buffer. All right. I can run my agricultural trucks out of this registered farm all I want with my farm plates. All right.
That's not the point.
That, I, I don't, I don't really need your special permit because you guys have already made a decision prior to this, to this Zoom meeting. Because you guys, quite honestly, I know you're afraid to have this, Pete and Russ, in person. So you're just going to railroad the thing, Russ, by all your body language, your previous conversation with, with Peter. And you, you talked about a letter that I have no idea what you're talking about.
Bailey, 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 I'm going to ask our planning director. Can you go into the files that were sent to this board for this meeting? And pull up the continuation request that we received from Mr. Levine for the May meeting in which he indicated that Mr. O'Brien wished to try to meet with the neighbors and the letter that was attached?
Um, I can look through, it wasn't included in tonight's meeting, but I believe it was for the previous meeting.
Yeah, the five seventeen is in that file.
Five seventeen?
Yeah, it's in that date.
The letter, um, yeah, I have the letter pulled up now.
Can you put it up on the screen? Do you have sharing capabilities?
You should, yeah.
Yeah, I should be able to. Here we go. Can everyone see that?
So go to the, so go to the attachment.
This is, this is the letter.
So there was an attachment. Next page.
The next one.
That same file, it's just the next page, scroll down.
Oh, thank you.
There you are.
Keep going. Please go down. All right. So second, third line on the next page. Please scroll down. I have now seen and read the special permit and understand and will abide by all specific conditions in an effort to alleviate some concerns. That's, and I believe that's signed by you, Mr. O'Brien, with your phone number? I, I can't hear you, Mr. O'Brien.
Yeah, that is correct, Russ.
And is that not exactly what I read into, into this evening's meeting?
You know, Russ, I'd have to go back and watch the minutes, see how they're represented. But.
I just read it into, into tonight's meeting.
Yeah, Ross.
You said you've never seen this letter and never wrote such a thing. And there it is, black and white. And there it is, black and white.
There, you're right, Russ. You're correct, Russ. Yes, I did write that. The business is run here the same as it's been for twenty-three years, right? The same as it was before the special permit and the same as it is today.
And you, and you wrote, I now will abide.
My, my understanding of what that meeting and what transpired is not representative of what is in that special permit.
Right.
That special permit was, the first time I had seen those conditions was months ago. My wife as well.
And, and why would a rational person go and seek out the, the language of the special permit? Or the minutes of the meeting, when we sat through that meeting and it was told to us, yes, you can continue to run your home-based business as you've been running it. That's ridiculous to think that somebody would go and seek out something that was never sent to them, never sent to us. And that language in that letter is still vague. It still doesn't, what does harvesting mean? We don't do anything on this property to, uh, have a sawmill. The, the whole purpose of that meeting was they wanted to be sure. And you could talk to Tom Morissette, that we weren't going to have a sawmill here, a tub grinder, any sort of thing like that, which we do not.
One hundred percent. The, the meeting, it, I wish there was an audio and a video recording.
I do too. Yep.
Because the thing everybody was worried about was a sawmill going here or a firewood operation going here or a grinding operation going on here. One hundred percent. That's what they were worried about. That was never my intention. Yes, I do bring on logs on occasion and they go immediately onto another truck and go out of here. They go in and out. The trucks come in and out. That's it. All right. There's never been a grinding operation, a milling operation, a firewood operation here. Nor was that ever my intent. And that's what was brought up at the meeting. And then it got misconstrued, misconstrued in the special permit language. All right. Never saw it. Robin, God rest her soul. And everybody on this board can attest to this because I've served on boards in this town for years. And it's very hard to change minutes broadly. All right. Generally, you just wave your wand and pass it through. I understand it's a legal document. I get all that. All right. I've been on boards for a long time. I've been before boards more times than I can count as a forester. All right. And I've seen so many minutes miswritten and tried to bring changes up, but it's, it's very difficult. All right. So minutes are just generalizations of what occurred. All right. Interpretations, if you will. Robin's interpretation of what transpired is not an accurate reflection. Because I was the, there, the guy there applying for the permit. So I'm pretty, pretty cognizant of what my business is then and now. It's the same. I wouldn't apply for something that, and then change it. If anything, I do less now than I've ever done. All right. And I'm protected under ag laws. I know this backwards and forth because I've researched it and I've talked to ag lawyers. So when I applied for that, it was strictly another layer of insulation. I haven't changed. I never misrepresented myself. I never saw the minutes. And I never saw the special permit conditions until just recently. So now fast forward twenty-three years, thirty-five years in business, nothing's changed. And now you have, you have a couple of neighbors complaining because they're stuck at home in COVID. And the board is now going to railroad a solid family, a hard-working man and family because of two neighbors. And you're, this is a railroad job too.
Ambiguous language.
Yes. And some ambiguous language that is not representative of what occurred, as Larry alluded to. Mr. Morissette, who was the chairman at the time, knows what the business is. It's never changed. And I'm sure most of the, Pete, George, you've been around. Nothing's changed here. You're all cognizant of it. So Russ, you, you do know me, Russ, because we served on a board together. That, that was, that was your, how you started it with a blatant lack.
Was that CP, was that CPC?
Was that CPC? Please, Russ.
I don't know.
Have your vote, have your vote, have your vote.
Members of the board.
Tom, Tom, if you'll listen for a second. The only problem is you stated, we discussed and you agreed that you were going to bring your truck in after you cut logs during the day. And it was going to leave the next day. That's fine. And you have the right to do that. There's no problem with it. When you stockpile logs from other locations, it violates number fifteen. And you're working on the property. You're not supposed to. That's the only problem here. It's not you. It's not a railroad. It's a clear violation of it. And we just can't shut our eyes to it regardless. I'm sorry, that's just, that's just the way that thing's written. What you should do is have it rewritten somehow. If we, if it gets revoked, reapply and have definite firm conditions put down that you understand or that we all understand. But the way it's written is to bring in the logs on the property and stockpiling them and having a trailer truck pick them up is a clear, it's, it's, you're, you're breaking the terms of the special permit. There's nothing we can say about it. It's not a personal thing. There's no railroading going on. There's no decision made behind your back. I read all of the, all of the special permit conditions and there's three violations. There's nothing we can do about it, Tom. We understand it's a hardship, but you should be able to find a place to stockpile your logs. Keep, keep your truck there. Drive your truck in and out. Bring your stuff in that you did during the day. Get rid of it the next day. That's perfect. But stockpiling and bringing extra stuff in is a violation of the special permit. Find a little place, stockpile your logs and sell them. Then you're fine. That's all there is. That's, that's the only problem. And I, I would love to see you continue bringing your Paul Bunyan truck in during the day or night when you've done, done your work. I saw you with a folio the night pulling the property and the next day get rid of it. That's what we all agreed on. And when I walked the property back in oh nine, I think it was, uh, there was a couple of trailers there. There was no stockpiling of wood. It wasn't bad or anything. There was no logs brought in for anywhere else. And that was the flavor of it, was that you were going to continue to do that. Bring in what you cut during the day on your log truck and get rid of it the next day. That's, that's fine. But you can't bring stuff in and stockpile it and sell it.
It's, first of all, it's, it's not retail. It's wholesale. All right.
Okay, whatever it is.
I wouldn't apply for a permit conducting ag or cutting trees where I wouldn't be able to drive the wood on and off the property. Do you think that, that I'm going to just drive the, go and do the wood and then it's just going to disappear? And then I'm going to, yes, you just said I can drive it onto the property and drive off with it. Yes, that's largely what I do. That's mainly what I do. Here and there, I will load it onto another truck. So it's me driving onto my own farm, conducting farming operations by me running a log loader. And to be a kind neighbor, I just moved it back. So it's, it's now longer two football fields away. Now it's a thousand feet away. All right. Terry, Terry neglected to mention that, that I, I tried to be a good neighbor. I tried to be a good guy. All right.
You told me that you moved it.
This, nothing's changed. Nothing has changed. I wouldn't apply for a special permit that was by this board and, and that special permit and the language it's there is worthless to me. What would be the point? What would be the point? Use, use. What would be the point? Use, use a little common sense here, all right? I'm going to go out of my way. I can conduct everything I'm doing here legally under ag laws. And I'm going to go and apply for the special permit. I answered everything truthfully and honestly as it was posed to me. There was never any misconstruption of, of what I was going to do here or what I was representing, all right? Robin was asking pointed questions. Are you going to run a sawmill? You're going to do fire with it? No, that's not my intent. My intent is I'm conducting tree harvesting. I bring it on here, and then it goes offsite. Usually the next day. Sometimes it's a few days, yes. But there's not an operation where I'm, I'm processing the wood here. It's coming on site. It's either leaving on my truck or it's going on another truck offsite. Nothing more, nothing less. All protect, protected under ag laws. Think about this. Why would I apply for a special permit and accept it that was worthless and meant nothing? It doesn't make sense. It doesn't make sense. Nothing has changed. Nothing has changed.
Tom, Tom, you're, some of your neighbors said that the log trucks, other than yours, come in and drop logs off on your property. That is the problem.
Tractor trailers came in, and as they have for twenty-three years. And on a rare occasion, other log trucks will come in when I'm either on vacation or I'm sick, whatever. On the rare occasions, yes, other log trucks have come in and out of here. And yes, tractor trailers have come in and out of here as they have for twenty-three years. Nothing has changed. So now fast forward twenty-three years, COVID, couple of police complaints, couple of neighbors complain. You know, I, I think it's kind of funny, Russ, that, that, because you saw, or maybe you can't see, there's probably fifty people lined up to speak. Eighty percent of them, eighty percent of them are our neighbors. One of our neighbors is at, is at our door because she's, she's frustrated that they can't speak.
Mr. O'Brien.
Neighbors along Elm Street are elderly.
I'm going to, I'm going to stop that, right? I'm going to stop that right now. I explained the difference between a public meeting and a public hearing. During the initial public meeting, we allowed anyone who wanted to speak to speak, and, and lots of people spoke. So people did have the opportunity to address this board, and many people did say the same thing, that you are a wonderful person, and they had no issues. But there were other individuals who expressed real concerns. So people did have the opportunity to speak, so to say otherwise is completely incorrect. And I'm still waiting for you to acknowledge again that the language that I spoke about early on in my comments were indeed in that letter signed by you. You said, you said you had never seen such a thing. It had never written such a thing, but indeed you did.
Russ, the way you spoke it.
Can we stop having personal arguments?
Back to the board.
And?
So the board, what's the board's pleasure?
There's, there's no question involved here at all.
I, 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 I think we're just going, Mr. Chairman, we're going, I think, round robin.
Yeah.
Um, I think we've brought out all of the evidence or any new evidence that was brought out. Um, I think we should move towards, I'll, I'll start off, I don't know how we would, I'm make the motion. Would it be in the affirmative or the negative?
Well, it depends what your motion is, John, but it needs to be in the affirmative.
I would think the motion would be to revoke.
So I will make a motion to revoke the special permit.
Is there a second? Mr. Punderson.
I want Mr. O'Brien to be able to reapply.
He's certainly capable of doing so. Yep.
And I'd just like to note that, Tom, you just admitted that occasionally trucks bring logs onto your property. What are we supposed to do after you even admit it?
Pete, Pete, where?
A second to motion.
I think.
Now is their discussion on the motion. Hearing none by roll call. Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Nay.
Ms. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
And I'm a yea as well. This matter is concluded. Is there further business, Mr. Clerk?
There is not.
A motion to adjourn.
Full move.
Second.
Motion made in second by roll call. Ms. Chair Swallow.
Aye.
Mr. Punderson.
Aye.
Mr. Kingston.
Aye.
Mr. Torsha.
Aye.
And I'm a yes as well. Meeting is adjourned.